Call this meeting of the Brockton School Committee to order and ask you to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, no mistastral, alright, okay. So, we open each meeting with a hearing of visitors, an opportunity for anyone to come in front of the school committee, the mayor and the superintendent, and speak for up to three minutes. Tonight, we did not have anyone sign in for hearing of visitors. As everyone knows, we've got the student awards next door in the main auditorium, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to recess. Motion to recess has been made and properly seconded, all in favor. Passes unanimously. We will, for people that hear from the public, we anticipate forty-five minutes to an hour, we don't have an exact time, but my best guess is close to an hour. We'll be next door handing out awards. When the award ceremony is done, we'll come back, come out of recess, and continue with the balance of tonight's school committee meeting. We had to open the meeting because of the open meeting law, we have to start the meeting on time. So, at this point, having the motion pass unanimously, we are in recess. Alright, good evening, everyone. It's great to have you all here with us tonight for awards night. And to open tonight's ceremonies, I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the presentation of colors by Brockton High School, Jay Allen. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Well, greetings and welcome to Student Recognition. Absolutely one of my favorite events of the year. This is my sixth, or second year participating in Student Recognition Night, and never gets there. I think that I speak for all the members of the school, many of the superintendents, when I say how incredibly proud we are of reaching every young person in the school. And I think that, you know, it's really important to note that we have our students here this evening that are excelling in so many different areas. There are people here tonight that are excelling academically, athletically, artistically, and many of you are more than one of those categories. So, it's an honor for me to be here and to congratulate each of the award recipients personally, and I look forward to grading them. So, at this time, I would like to introduce to you our superintendent of schools, Kathleen Smith.
Certainly echoes sentiment of the mayor. We are incredibly proud of each and every one of you and everything they do to make sure that people understand we are the city champions. We start with some of our very youngest students, to certainly our high school students. I want to congratulate all the seniors that we graduated this coming week. I had the opportunity to go take the exams, they're beautiful. I've had the opportunity to go to the band awards last night, the JROTC dining out evening. And the Bonnite Association just gave out their scholarship. This is why we are all here. As the mayor said, I can't thank enough the mayor, our school committee, who continues to make your education a priority. Your academics, on the sport field, certainly on the stages, and the mayor's thank your auto awards, all of those things are important. And when you look around, we might face difficult budget times, but we make sure that you are supported in every way that we can. I also want to thank the parents, the family members that are out there this evening, because certainly we could not do this without your continued support of your children. They are a priority certainly to you and certainly to us. I also look out there and I see your teachers, the coordinators, our directors, the executive directors, our great administrative interns, who I know are out there supporting this particular event and so many things in the district. So, certainly a thank you to all of you. To our communications director, Justin, we couldn't do this without you, putting this together with your team to make sure that this is a very special night for our students. So, let me bring up, I think the first group of awards are going to be math and science. This is grade six through eight, I'd like to invite some parents to our coordinator of math and science break at this day. And one thing that we're asking is that you please hold your applause until the last group in each category has received their award, to be sure that everybody gets the recognition that they deserve. Thank you, jump.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn Smith, and thank you, school committee and your chapter. We appreciate your opportunity to monitor students tonight. We have some very, very hardworking students, and we'd like to thank the parents for being here and supporting them. So, I'm very pleased to announce the results of the Lincoln Math League Contest for the thirty-third consecutive year. Students from Brockton Schools have played in the results either in elementary and in middle school contests. Throughout the DEI year, these students have taken some math tests. The one that gave them the opportunity to be here tonight is a third time question test, which they need to complete in forty minutes. And I'm very honored, these questions are not simple questions. They take a lot of thought and a lot of calculation. So, for those people to be here tonight, they've done excellent job. The first group we're going to talk about today is the group from Fluff Academy. This is the grade of eight, they came in second place with a total score of ninety-seven points. I'm going to call attention to the students from Fluff up here now. Tina Skolomore. Here, Corilla. Dale Quimby. Molly Sullivan, unable to be here tonight. And Timothy Coolis, also unable to be here. The next group we want to talk to, talk about tonight is the Ashfield School Group. This is the eighth grade group from the Ashfield. They came in fourth place this year with a total score of ninety points. The participants from Ashfield are Megan Steele. Jaylen Bridges, who's unable to attend. Jared Viola. Jake Jerome, unable to be here. Tom Velelo, not here as well, thank you very much. The next group is the Fluff Academy, and a grade seventeen as well. They came in second place with a total score of ninety-one points. The group is led by Michael Kerdoff. Next, Samantha Gideon. Anthony Pham. Alexis Farmer. And Ronan Ford. Our grade fifteen from Fluff Academy came in second place with a total score of one hundred eleven points. Members of that, that team are Brian Aruna. Grant Guest. Ray Donovan. Omasefi, and Navarre. And our last group, from North Middle School, a grade fifteen, came in fourth place in the leadership with a ninety-two point. We have George Vega. Isaiah Sullivan. Yanni Luamato. Andre Cordiero. Isaiah Uteah. We have one final sixth grade group from Fluff Academy, who was on the second place team, but also scored fourth place in the league for individual sports. So, I'd like to call up, we have you, Francis, we need you. Good job, guys. That's the group on math and work. Yes, the teachers, while they helped throughout the year, supported them as well. The next group of students I'd call up are the winners of the regional middle school science fair. These students, again, their effort in probably back before November when they started, thinking about what kind of project they might be doing for the science fair. This is a project that continues throughout the year, they do research, they do experiments, they get help from their teachers with working on the projects throughout the year. And maybe if you may, we tend to probably attend this, we brought, we brought the science fair that we had in March, where we had about a hundred and twenty projects. Twenty-five of those students went to the regional fair and, I said, regional college from Wisco. And we have a group of students from one of the regional fair, and will continue on to the state fair next Saturday, where they'll compete with other students throughout Massachusetts. The winners at the regional fair, and many of them did an excellent job. We have our first project called Simply Solar, done by Taylor Freeborn and Patrick Healy. They're to be honorable mention at the regional fair. The next project, So Get Up, also from Fluff, Katie Rick. Honorable mention as well. Next is Alexander Hume, from Fluff Academy. Her project, Get the Breaks from Pollution, came in first place at the regional fair. Lastly, Sabrina Aruna, from Fluff Academy. Her project, When Your iPad Is Ready to Die Exercise, second place at the regional fair. Erin Hamlin, from Fluff Academy. Her project, Running on Water, she's second place at the regional fair. And our last project, by Mary Kerdoff, Fluff, Musical Electricity. She was the top grand prize winner at the regional fair. Congratulations to all those students. Now, my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ethan Campell, who will present the awards to the students who achieved perfect scores on the MCAS.
Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot be the smartest man ever, but I can assure you, I can absolutely assure you that that is true. I may have gotten my doctor's from Harvard, but my entire career taking standardized tests, I never once had a perfect score. And we have a very large group of students who achieved just that on the hardest, most difficult state test in the country. Some statistics that will help, you know, get a sense of what accomplishment you're witnessing tonight. Roughly half a million students take the MCAS. Fewer than point seven percent, that's point seven, that's less than one percent of the students, score a perfect score in the LA, but nine Brockton students did. Less than one point eight percent scored a perfect score in math, but thirty-one Brockton students did. In the science, this is, this is a little crazy here. In the science, only one-third of the percent scored a perfect score. We had two Brockton students, and by the way, they're both women, women in science, it is a beautiful brain. The mayor's turned it out, we've been doing this for a while, but it does seem like we have more, because we do have more students in Brockton scoring perfect scores. We need more students this year than last year. So, it's a very strong showing. Without further ado, I want to bring up the students, and if we could please hold our applause till the end. From the Kennedy School, getting things off tonight, this is last year's MCAS scores in third grade, Olivia Spadia. From the Raymond, Jade Penti, from South Middle. Not here tonight, Denise Mejia, from Fluff Academy. Ketavon Desetis. The Fluff Academy, Hannah McDonald. Also from Fluff, Sayenna Mashamiri. Also from Fluff, Michaela Williamsford. And from Brockton High, Hallie Jeremy. So, that was the first of the LA squad awards. Our fabulous math department with a large number of perfect scores in math. From Mary Baker School, Dominic Hopkins. From the George School, Andre Rosino. From Brookfield, Marcus Howington. Alexandra Marina, from Brookfield. From the Kennedy School, Liliana Ali. Also from the Kennedy, Jason Gillis Jr. Also from the Kennedy, Peter Johnson. And as well, from the Kennedy, Brady Witt. From the Hancock, we had Simone Colette. And Nathan Latour. Also from the Hancock, Anna Zuckerman. From the Huntington, we're very well represented. We have Nelson Andrade. Melissa Andrade. Joviana Gomes. Anthony Montón. And Fabio Iris Montero. From the Angelo, we have Iyana Hunter. Renee Wong. Casey Tan. Brady Aruda. Andrew Beely. Daniel Alstead. Kyle Rodriguez. Monica Trent. Have to change papers here. Ariana Dukron. From West Middle Schools, Marcel Amazon. From Fluff Academy, Isadora Amazon. Now, you can imagine the conversations around the dinner table at this house, who's the better math student? From Fluff Academy, Anthony Pham. Continuing at Fluff, Ashley Pham. And Cole Wyman. And now, that's all of math. Representing the point third percent. We have Nigisa Alexis. And Samantha Han. As I mentioned, we had, is not here tonight, but we have a student, Sean Galligan, who scored a perfect score in both the LA and math. There were only, out of the half thousand students who took it, only eight hundred and forty-one accomplished this score. It's truly remarkable, and I have to thank all the parents, all the teachers, all the families that support our students. This is amazing accomplishment, really nice job. It's my privilege to introduce Dr. Julian Andre, who will present the awards for the Littlebread Schoolhouse Association's spelling bee.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming. Each grade, students grade three to eight, in all Brockton Public Schools, private and brokered schools square off the Littlebread Schoolhouse Association Annual Spelling Week. Each contestant has won a grade-wide spelling bee to represent their school, and the winners from the citywide league are awarded prizes from the league sponsors. We are pleased with their excellent performance this year. I am happy to announce the first place winners of the elementary school spelling league competition. Grade three, first place, from Trinity School, Enavon Anako. Grade four, first place, Ali John Hepties, here at Angelo School. Grade five, first place, Isabella McHut, from the Angelo School. And now, it's my privilege to introduce Island McQuaid Middle School, the LA and City-Stones Coordinator, who will present the awards for the Littlebread School, our senior, and National Kids' Day Awards for the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Andre. And I'm so pleased to announce the middle school winners of the Littlebread Schoolhouse Spelling Week. And the first place winner for grade six is from the Ashfield School, and her name is Amanda Williams. The first place winner of the citywide spelling bee for grade seven was from the Raven School this year, and that is Sean Leonard. It was a tough one, he had to go head-to-head for about fifteen words before he finally won. It was a good win for him. The first place winner of the citywide spelling bee for grade eight was from North Middle School, and that is Jaden Ryan. And kind of applause for all of them. And I'm so pleased to announce the next category. This is National Kids' Day, and every year, Brockton students really do us proud when they compete in this competition, and this year was no exception. They, the students do a research project based upon a theme, and they have to resource many, many, many sources, and they have to put it together in all kinds of different formats, from a individual performance, to a tricycle, to a website. And it's really exciting to see that our students can get people to give them a word and tap for them for their important work in research, in social studies. So, I'd like to thank the teachers who participated in this, because it's really a long haul, it takes many months of hard work for our social studies teachers. I'd also like to thank Stacy Medina and Bill Zachowicz, who worked so hard to make the program such a great success this year. And we had so many of these winners for the middle school this year. We had three first place winners in three different categories this year. And I'd like to bring up the first one. From the Fluff School, a first place winner for her project was Alexander Agunit. Alexander won for the Junior Individual Documentary. For the Junior Group Exhibit Board, we have a student from Fluff, a group, and it was first place goes to Lara Cadosa, Megan, and Megan Orinoff. Orinoff. And we'll talk about them a little bit later. We also have Junior Group Performance from West Middle School, first place, Sandra Alicia, Emma Jesus, and Anna Carolina Cadosa. Brockton also had second place winners in three categories. For the Junior Individual Performance from Fluff Academy, we have Elizabeth Mookie. For the Junior Individual Documentary category, from West Middle School, we have Nick Prantino. For the Junior Group Performance, also from Fluff, we have second place, that they won, Shaden Petithe Prayer, Sophia Mine, and Eva Petithe Prayer. We also had winners in three categories. The third place for the Junior Group Documentary category- For third place, for the Junior Group Documentary category, from the PLOP School, we have Amina Razee, Deborah Silva, and Francesca Demore. For the Junior Individual Website category, from the PLOP School, we have Anthony Jones. For the Junior Individual Performance from West Middle School, we have Emily Porciello. We also have honorable mentions in four categories of the regional competition this year. And we have, from West Middle School, for the Junior Group Documentary, Alana Gomes and Ariana Ofro. But they're not here tonight. We also have, honorable mention for Junior Individual Performance from West Middle School, DeeDee De Seco. And then for the Junior Individual Website category, from the PLOP School, we have Erin Hamlin. About this night, honorable mention goes to Sky Montero and Sheila Gole. But I'm not that I'm talking about the National History Day, students, winners in Brockton this year. Because those are our winners from the regional contest, and we were really fortunate this year to have some students go on to the national contest. So what they're going to do is they're going to compete next week, for four days, in Washington DC. And this group, the Junior Group Exhibit, first place, Megan Orindal and Lara Cadosa. Their teacher is Matt Koala, and not only are they going to compete in DC at the national competition, but their tri-ful, their junior group exhibit, is going to be displayed at the Smithsonian Museum. And we also have to recognize Junior Individual Documentary second place winner, who is also going to Washington DC, and that's Alexandra Yuna. Both from the PLOP, and Matt Koala is a great teacher, right? Great job. All right, and then we also have honorable mentions for that competition. And it's Junior Individual Performance, honorable mention, is Elizabeth Muki. So we can give Elizabeth another honorable applause. As for Junior Group Performance, honorable mention for Shaden Petit Prayer, Sophia Vine, and Shifa Petit Prayer from West, we can give that. And for Junior Group Documentary, honorable mention at the national level is Emily Porciello. Congratulations, she's great. Wonderful young, history's gone, well, you did such a great job. Okay, so now it's my pleasure to welcome more Language Department Head, Jayne Rataano, who will present the National Latin and Indigenous Awards.
It's always such a pleasure to be here, welcome everybody. And I would like to just give you a little quick background on some of these awards. The Duska Mythology Exam is a national exam given throughout the nation. Two of our students this year received the Bronze Elite Drop Award, which is very high, very high award. Latin students at North, South, and West Middle Schools, as well as the Brockton High School, participated in the National Latin exam this year. As all exams are given in March, to approximately a hundred fifty thousand students worldwide. Students from all fifty states, as well as thirteen foreign countries, including Australia, Canada, China, France, Germany, Iran, Italy, Japan, Yemen, Poland, Taiwan, United Kingdom, and Zimbabwe participate. This year Latin students participated in the exam in three different levels, and we have over thirty students who received the award on the Duska Mythology exam. So I would like to invite our students up, as I told you, to come forward. We have Gabrielle Fernandez-Cacca, Latin one, Latin one. Hester Arivoke, in Latin one, cum laude. In Latin two, Deborah Wong, silver, maximus, cum laude. William Hernandez, in Latin two, silver, maximus, cum laude. Condi Abbi, in Latin two, silver, maximus, cum laude. And Nicole Amitia, Latin two, cum laude. At the Orange Middle School, we have Liana Lee Barrosa, in Latin one, magna cum laude. From South Middle School, we have Joaquin Monge, Latin one, gold, summa cum laude. We have Joaquin Pierre, in Latin one, gold, summa cum laude. Gabrielle Eting, Latin one, silver, maximus, cum laude. Jay Etken, Latin one, silver, maximus, cum laude. Kathy Willis, Latin one, silver, maximus, cum laude. Nathan Elchami, Latin one, silver, maximus, cum laude. Jennifer De Rosa, Latin one, magna cum laude. Hayley Jumper, Latin one, magna cum laude. Alexander Salgado, Latin one, magna cum laude. Jason Winansio, Latin one, cum laude. Montia O'Calla, Latin one, cum laude. And Austin Babbitt, Latin one, cum laude. From West Middle Schools, these students are all Latin one students as well. Audrey Bustan, gold, summa cum laude. Benson Fan, silver, maximus, cum laude. Destiny Fran, magna cum laude. Hayden Reardon, magna cum laude. Lisa Delecton, magna cum laude. Joene Finja, magna cum laude. Sabrina Herr, magna cum laude. Michaela Dos Santos, magna cum laude. Madison Noon, magna cum laude. Jenea Vincent, cum laude. I'm sorry, Jenea Vicente. Annabelle Lemoore, cum laude. Gabriel Coley, cum laude. And Brittany Lenczi, cum laude. On the Duska Mythology exam, we have both students received a Corona Boliva. We had Adam Wilder. And Marshall Yessi. So we're very proud as well, congratulations. I also want to thank your teachers for working so hard with them and supporting them.
May be, I'm Michelle Tonn, Coach Finance Department Head at Brockton High School. And after what was explained earlier, we're ready to use our time to honor our students' records on our student council. Now, in that, these students participated in extended research projects, covering human leadership and web design. They went on to represent Brockton State Contest and Labor and Social Union. For Senior Individual Exhibit, earning second place, Danielle Martin. Earning third place, for his project, Mary Lee, Lena Thomas. For Senior Individual Website, earning second place, Hannah Holm. And third place, Christopher Altman. Senior Individual Documentary, earning third place, Heidi Frisler. And for Senior Group Performance, earning first place and representing her entire group, Diane Delecton. Selena England, Heidi Madoff. Please join me in recognizing their wonderful contribution. Now, as the music director, the mic is for Selena, who will present the all state music festival.
Each year, the auditions for the Southeast District Music Festivals are held in November. Students who score a vaulted district cutoff point are invited to audition for the all state music festivals sponsored by the Massachusetts Music Theatre Association. This three day event displays the Boston's best minds for students to rock stage performing their different musical talents, finishing the event with a performance of Symphony of All. This year, we're pleased to announce that five members of Brockton High School Music Program, which elected to represent Brockton High School, are to perform with the all state chorus. Please welcome the following students, Nathaniel Smith. Brian Bestless. Macaulay Bursey. Michelle Tassie. Now, we need to introduce the Director of our program, Sarah Wood.
The Brockton High School Finance Department, please to announce eleven students from high school and four students from three middle schools of one eighteen autumn from the two thousand and twenty eight class of art and writing. These awards recognize the hard work, dedication, and talent of the student teachers of the Brockton Public School Art Program. As students continue to represent themselves well in five hundred and thirty-eighteen. Our first winners from Selina's School, Skylar Vendre, silver key. North Middle School, Alana Montero, honorable mention, drawing and illustration. Davis School, Jasmine Andre, silver key, drawing and illustration. George Lopez, honorable mention, sculpture. Brockton High School, painting, Raúl Mendoza, honorable mention. Drawing, Toby Alvarez, silver key, honorable mention. Julio Espina, silver key. Lucy Avesta, honorable mention. Sculpture, Lance Gordine, silver key. Sculpture, Francisco Valera, honorable mention. Photography, Rashmi Agai, she won a both key and a national silver key in photography. Hayley Chusa, both key, honorable mention and honorable mention. Printmaking, Selena Raymond, honorable mention. Samaya Tate Peterson, honorable mention. And that concludes our class of our awards. Brockton High School Drama Club, this year, a hundred twenty-four high schools competed at the preliminary level of the New England Drama Club. Brockton High School Drama Club's production, Gary Greenbo's Battle with Gringles and Other Turtles, Turtles and Mudmills, was one of only fourteen selected to compete at the state finals. The captain put one accolade at all three levels of competition. This group of students worked hard, worked together, a wonderful show, and they made us very proud. This is the third year in a row that the Drama Club has gone to the state finals, we couldn't be prouder of them. Dennis the Cat, Johnny Smith. Randy Bella. Keenan Tucker. Gina Shay. Dean Shay, so far. Michaela Sarano More. Brian Bestless. Bradley Lambert. Kayla Limbering. Cameron Harris. Divine Vayner. Liana Missay. Shawna Jocelyn. Alexis Tautopoulos. Tamara Marin. Joshua P. A. Our stage manager, Danielle Harper. Studio Ambassador, Fernando Martin. Lighting designer, Anna K. We have our set time team, Mary Kate Clark. Brittany Gagid-Duck. Ariel Dean. Set execution in Tech Room. Adriana Alicia. Paul Ana Laro. Lillian Lam. Tiana Damsworth. Tiana Desatanto. Haley Foster. Stephanie Jermaine. Brett Harris. Julia Harvick. Nick Loach. Brooke Reynolds. And Andrea Romo. Our props manager, Selena Dean. Wardrobe and makeup designer, Amy Dunn. Ayesha Gulam. Maya Hinkin. Ashley Tom. Courtney Sullivan. Bolan Nethard. Ashley Sussman. And Devon Hooper. And that concludes the panel. Now, I would like to introduce Lieutenant Richard Clark, who will present the awards to the JRTC.
Good evening, my name is Lieutenant Colonel Richard Clark, and I'm with the JRTC Department. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize our top four cadets, who have recently been selected as a cadet of the JRTC program, with the remainder of this year in that. JRTC is a character leadership development program. It differs from most other programs in the sense that the cadet format is critical to its success. As such, our cadets continually present leadership opportunities, which they can develop their interpersonal, problem-solving, and situational, and communicative skills, while simultaneously learning something about building character. As the key leaders, these will begin their own recovery of leading and managing the program's administrative, operational, and tactical actions necessary to support school creative events. So without further ado, the ranks, positions, and names are responsible. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel, Battalion Commander, Sally Montero. Cadet Major and Battalion Executive Officer, Alexander Warren. Cadet Major and Battalion Operations Officer, Xavier MacIntyre. Cadet Major and Battalion Operations Officer, Xavier MacIntyre.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lieutenant Lieutenant Colonel Richard here at Rockton High School. It is my honor to present to you the outstanding athletes of Rockton High School, young men and women, who have demonstrated skill on the playing field, but also scholastic aptitude in the classroom. These young athletes have made us proud, and we call the city of champions, and I commend each of them. This year, in our athletic program, without coming the spring season, because they have not been selected as of yet, we had five world all-scholastics, we had three herald all-scholastics, thirty-three enterprise all-scholastics, and a hundred and eleven big three all-stars, two national letter of the tenth division one signees. For love's sake, for the fall season of football, Aaron Montero, enterprise all-scholastic, all-scholastic. Enterprise all-scholastic and all-scholastic. Marcus Bullitt, enterprise all-scholastic. Boys soccer, Louis Pinto, enterprise all-scholastic. Girls soccer, Jennifer Peruso, enterprise all-scholastic. Ariana Sylvia. I'll wait on it, I'll wait. Boys cross-country, Stephen McCall, enterprise all-scholastic. Christopher McCaffrey, enterprise all-scholastic. Matthew Kerrigan, enterprise all-scholastic. Girls cross-country, Patricia Mullins, enterprise all-scholastic. Girls volleyball, Erin Best, enterprise all-scholastic. Toni Fairher, enterprise all-scholastic. Courtney Francis, enterprise all-scholastic. Winter season, boys basketball, Tiana Montero, enterprise all-scholastic. Jonathan Devivier, enterprise all-scholastic. Garrison Devivier, enterprise all-scholastic. Amari Appleberry, enterprise all-scholastic. Ice hockey, Justin Allen, enterprise all-scholastic. Corey Paul, enterprise all-scholastic. Boys indoor track, Jonathan Deruus, enterprise all-scholastic, 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 and New England champions. I'll do it myself. Alita Guido, enterprise all-scholastic, girls basketball. Delonte Jackson, girls enterprise all-scholastic basketball. Mayor Conover, would you like to give your presentation?
What about wrestling? Wrestling? Whoa!
All right. Cole Whining, wrestling, enterprise all-scholastic.
I'd like to have one additional athletic award that I would like to present personally. Last summer, we, for the first time in a long time, brought back our playground recreational programs in the summertime for the young kids ages seven to twelve, at five different playgrounds around the city. And as part of that program, I reached out to the girls tennis team, Coach Guido, to see if they could help us out running some tennis clinics for us at the new tennis courts outside the Gilmore School. And so, these young women came in, did a great job for us with the younger kids, and offered free tennis instructions to young people from the city of Rockton and the Gilmore School playground. So I wanted to issue a citation from the city of Rockton, the Rockton High Girls Tennis Team in recognition of their spirit of volunteerism. They taught a game in which they excelled for those who were eager to learn. For that, the city is grateful. You are living proof that winning does not always happen on the court. The most important victories are those that take place in the community. Therefore, it gives me great pleasure to present this citation as a symbol of our appreciation. This citation was duly signed by myself, American City of Rockton, on this day, the second of June. I'd like to invite up to receive the award along with Coach Guido, Dominique Tran, Hallie I think we'll have to move the head of checks. Okay, that concludes the awards portion of the program. I would like to again personally congratulate each and every student who was recognized for their outstanding achievement tonight. And for those that, for the few of you that may be interested in the school committee meeting, that will be reconvened shortly in the little theater. To everyone else, congratulations for the families, the students. Have a great evening and enjoy the rest of the school year. We look forward to seeing you again.
At eight thirteen, we'll call this meeting, the Rockton School Committee, back to order and back from recess, and pick up with the agenda right where we left off, which is with the consent agenda. For those that aren't familiar, the consent agenda is a mechanism in which the school committee can handle multiple pieces of routine business as one block to keep the meeting moving along. However, any individual school committee member may request that an item in the consent agenda be removed for individual consideration. So at this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the committee that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion. Motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Jordan to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. So at this point, it's my pleasure to turn the meeting over to the superintendent of schools for the report on learning and teaching.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank everybody out there, again, that supported this event this evening. Not just this event, this time of year is wonderful to see the scholarships, the academics, all of what we just saw on that stage is really what makes Brockton great, and I think everybody out there that continues to support our students. In saying that, I'd like to turn this over to our student representative, and I'm sure she'll be able to tell us all of the wonderful things leading up to graduation coming this Saturday. Just?
I'd actually like to start by mentioning, last Thursday, it was Rockton High School's senior breakfast and prom, and everyone said the breakfast was delicious, and that it was just great being able to share all the memories that they had shared with their classmates throughout the year, with the administrators. And they said prom was very classy, and they had a wonderful time. So thank you to all our chaperones and everyone who attended. Tomorrow night is the music department's last concert of the year, it's our pops concert, so don't miss it tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. It's going to be fabulous, and there will be a flying chicken. So you have to come, have to be there. And this Saturday is Rockton High School's graduation. It begins at 2:00 PM at Marcyanna Stadium, so you should come and support all of our seniors who will be graduating. Congratulations to all of you, we're all very proud of Rockton High School. And book awards for the class of 2016 are Monday, June 8th. And also on Monday is Science MCAS and June 9th, Tuesday. So to everyone taking MCAS, it's the Science MCAS. Don't forget to get a really good night's sleep and a great breakfast in the morning. So good luck to everyone taking MCAS, and that's what's happening at Rockton High.
With all of the wonderful things happening, you see that academics continue at our schools, testing, exams, and school continues even after this Saturday. Again, we are looking at two meeting dates for the summer for our school committee meetings. We're recommending July 21st. A number of us are away the second week in July, when we normally would have had it at the superintendent conference, and that's, I think, the 13th of July through the 18th. So we're recommending July 21st, Tuesday, and also August 18th for our meeting in August. That'll be when the principals return that week. Also, the calendar, we're at a point where the Rockton Education Association does have a meeting this Thursday to ratify the contract. There is language in there that does affect our calendar, but looking at the calendar for the first reading this evening, we have already talked about, let's get this open. School beginning on, the teachers reporting on September 1st, the students' first day will be on Wednesday, September 2nd. And looking at the calendar, with five snow days built in, we would end school this year on June 22nd. If we did not need to use those snow days, taking five days off, our last day of school would be June 15th. And I think, looking ahead at what has happened the past couple of winters, we have done certainly, I think, an excellent job this year. Again, it's amazing that we're getting out this year on the 26th of June, a half a day. So you do have some days built in, and I want to remind everybody that the last day that we could attend school would be on the 30th of June.
Can you clarify, you're talking about the 15-15 calendar? Because I have teachers reporting September 1st.
I'm sorry, teachers report September 1st, the students report September 2nd.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Tuesday, September 1st, the teachers are reporting. So any questions on the calendar at this point? I do want to also remind everybody that as we go forward, one of the things that I'm looking at this summer is professional development days, so we will do our supplemental calendar that will build in our half-day schedules, and some of that will include some additional professional development days for our staff for this coming year. And I also want to bring to your attention a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the mayor, and we, of course, have had, again, what else can happen, but we had a water main break, and just thinking of all of the different departments that came together to make sure that our children were in school, that they were able to remain and focus on academics for the day, I want to thank the parents. We sent word out to parents not knowing what was happening during that process. We had a couple of schools that immediately went offline, other schools that it was difficulty with the sinks, the flushing of toilets, et cetera, all of those things that make up our day at school. And again, I want to thank the parents for supporting us, for helping out. I want to thank the mayor's office, of course, our DPW department, because when you think of, you know, the kids that were able to attend that first day, we were right back in session that second day. I know our DPW worked throughout the evening, and we really didn't skip a beat. So again, please understand that when we deal with situations like this, we need to have communication, which I feel was excellent, and also the support of our parents to make sure that our children are safe and are in an environment where they are able to learn academically. I also want to bring to your attention, during this past spring, we had a conference, an educator evaluation conference, that's put on all over the state to talk about best practices. And I want to remind you, if you go back a year, Brockton was so-called under the gun. We had 100% of our teachers that need to be evaluated. And this year, with our edeval specialists, our head teachers, our joint task labor management force, looking at edeval, we had two of our presenters, Yolanda DeFalco and Michelle Connors, and I received word from the DESE how fabulous the presentation was. I believe this was actually on the day of the water main break. I was unable to attend the conference, but I want to thank them again for putting Brockton out there, for continuing to move forward, and an evaluation process that I think has brought a lot of credibility, certainly, to our profession, and I'm very, very pleased we're able to present at that conference. And items to refer to subcommittee.
Yeah, so at this time, do you have some superintendent?
I do. I think, again, Mr. Minichello, you had asked about pending items to go before subcommittee. So a couple of things I think we'd like to take a look at. We do need to look at policy. We need to finalize the policy use, policy, and also, we right now, with our administrative interns, have an updating of the policy manual. I know they have reached out to, I think, both Mrs. Joyce and Andy Robinson. I think you've talked to our team working on the policy, and hopefully, as we start to put negotiations behind us, I think this is something that we'd like to come up with a schedule looking at the year ahead, so we can start to look at updating a number of the policies. And the other one on there, of course, is the superintendent contract, the superintendent evaluation. And as usual, I think it keeps getting, you know, pushed to the background with budget, with all of the things that we're dealing with in the spring, but I'd like to set up a date for that. Do you want to get back to us on dates for those? We'll put together some dates this summer, but that at least gives you an update.
Mr. Minichello?
Dr. Wanda, and we'll figure out, we'll coordinate some dates for those meetings.
Good.
Do you want them on a Sunday? Is that when you'd like them?
Yeah, a Sunday afternoon if you can.
How about 4th of July?
Don't tempt me. Under unfinished business?
Any members of the school committee have an item that they would like to refer to subcommittee? No? Okay. So under unfinished business, we'll have a report on the FY16 budget.
Okay, again, I just want to remind everybody that Wednesday evening, we are presenting before the city council. You know, one of the things that I'll talk about this year to the city council is, I know, Mayor, you presented, I believe, last evening. I think everybody in the community knows that we continue to deal with, you know, difficult budget, you know, certainly throughout our city. That doesn't mean we're working very, very hard, we're looking to identify every dollar that we possibly can to support our students in education. Tomorrow night, the presentation will simply be about conversation about what we feel we need for a budget. I'm going to spend quite a bit of time talking about Chapter 70, talking about the commission and the task force to look at Chapter 70, and making sure the council and the public understand that going forward, there are a number of things that certainly affect an urban district's budget. So I plan to talk to the city council about that, and also tomorrow evening, one of the things that I think we have talked about as a school committee, and I think it's very, very important as we go forward, is to start to look back at 19, actually, certainly before 1993. But when you talk about the McDuffie case that came up through the court system and talked about equity in educating our urban students, we are absolutely seeing an eroding of services, whether it's grants, that we're entitlement for urban districts are now competitive, whether it's looking at, again, Chapter 70, and how we evaluate English language learners in support, how we evaluate high poverty, how we evaluate, again, homeless students that we continue to support, and I keep saying that nobody does it better. But again, we're a large urban center, and we need to make sure that we give our students a fighting chance. So I will be talking to the city council about support this summer. I know, Mayor, you and I have spoken about this, and certainly the school committee is to invite a representative from the city council, our school committee, to start to talk about where we go from here, because I do believe that other urban districts will join us, and I think it's time to really take a look at how we're supporting our urban schools. and I think it's time to really take a look at how we're supporting urban education. We can't continue to go down this line. It has been a very difficult budget the past couple of years. We have done a good job this year of trying to prioritize, bring back some programs, and one of the things when we left our finance committee meeting last week, and we do have a subcommittee meeting coming up on June 9th, is we had a couple of decisions to make around school adjustment counselors, and how they would be utilized depending on the numbers that we brought back, so we're working on that. We will present that on the 9th, and we will continue to look at, if you look at the number of layoffs, we have identified with our certified staff 173 layoffs. I believe, again, we have to look at a few numbers on next Tuesday, but we pretty much have it down to, at this point, 125. So, as we continue to look at other funding that becomes available, certainly, when I say other funding, we're talking about our own efficiencies as we continue to look at our budget. So, the 165 million, 165, there was point...
Yeah, .03, basically 165.
That's what we will present to the city council on Wednesday evening.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Minichello?
When do we expect the results of the new look, so to speak, at the Chapter 70 formula? When is that supposed to be, that process complete? Does Mr. Petronio have a better handle on that?
I think it's supposed to be later this summer. Mr. Petronio can also share with you some of the things that we're hearing. He recently had a conference with MasBo, so we're kind of picking up on, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Minichello, because one of the things I will talk to the city council about when I talk about Chapter 70, and you've heard me say that Aldo was at every single one of those hearings throughout the state. Didn't matter if it was in Weston, Mass. I believe he went up there on the Friday night to make sure he could be there early on that Saturday morning. He and I traveled to the Cape. We made sure that we were heard at every one of those meetings, and a lot of the same themes, but we made sure every time we were able to talk about what we need to run an urban district.
A week or so ago, I was at the state school business officers conference down in Cape Quad, and both there was Secretary Peiser and Alice Peish, who's on the Chapter 70 committee. She's a state rep. She chaired it with Senator Chang Diaz, and they're the ones that listened to all the different school business officers and, you know, superintendents across the state. What they said was that in the summer, at some point, they'll make a recommendation to the Department of Ed as to what they feel the new formula should be shaped towards, and then at some point after that, they'll go back and develop the actual formula. But she did lead, I asked some questions, one of which was, I thought, very primary for us, was we had asked to move the October 1st date to mid-year, and part of the reasoning behind that is you have schools that kind of, you know, take our students but then send them back, and they're less likely to send them back if they've had them for half a year. Plus, we also have a growth of a couple hundred students over the course of the year. We could pick up some of that. So, at first, they were receptive, but she mentioned about a week or so ago that they're not going to look at that, that they're not leaning that way, but they are looking at, you know, our additional health insurance costs, and we asked that maybe tying the increases in our health budget to the GIC plan in the state. We kind of mirror it, so if the GIC plan goes up 5%, they'll hopefully change our allotment by that amount. As you know, the past year was about a 1.4% inflation factor. Last year was a .86% inflation factor, and again, at these hearings, I argued that you can't justify that factor when 85% of our budget is, you know, personal services, and a big part of that is health insurance. So, they're looking at that, just for that piece of the formula, though the rest, they want to base it off of just an aggregate state figure as far as increases across all state or municipal business. So, that's a much lower figure. They're looking at doing something for ELL and something for special education, but they really indicated they're not going to do much for poverty. They think that that's already pretty much represented well in the system, but the biggest argument you saw across the state was poverty, that the districts that showed up and came up to the microphone were the districts that had high poverty levels. And what they were asking for was the funding to take these children who have more than just a learning disability because of their background and do something for them, but it doesn't appear they're going to do much for that.
Very slight increase, but I don't think it's going to be adequate. That's my prediction. So, I think that what we need to do is we need to see what the end result's going to be, but my feeling is that we need to take steps to, you know, bring some sort of a relook through the courts on this thing, because, you know, if Mr. Petronio is accurate, which I know he always is, our needs are still not going to be met, and like you said, the needs of our students increased. The issues that the city and like cities that we all deal with, you know, aren't getting easier. It's more involved, and with respect to the mandates that are on us, with respect to the level of performance that the state expects and the progress they expect us to make, the AYP, you know, we're going to need to, you know, you get what you pay for, and if you're not willing to pay for it, you know, they're going to point the finger at districts like Brockton and other urbans and criticize, "Well, I think it's time that we make them put their money where their mouth is," you know. So, I mean, we'll see what the end result is, but I have a funny feeling, I don't have a funny feeling, I have a feeling that we're going in, you know, direction of litigation once again, so.
And when you look at some of the writing on the wall, I was at an event at Bridgewater State University, actually during the winter, and it was interesting. There were a couple of state representatives there and a state senator, not our representatives, a state senator, and Armando Viera, who is a teacher at the high school and has worked in a number of our programs in the summer, the CEW program, the C program, that support our bilingual youngsters in providing additional time for them to learn. These were all part and parcel of our programs in Brockton, along with our academic support programs for all our students. We're watching, again, which is why I'm going to tell you, the word "erode" is going to be out there. And what was interesting about Armando is he basically said to them, "We developed our own curriculum. We actually saw gains academically." You know, "This was a program that was working. Why would you cut something like this?" There were really no good answers. So, we know how to educate our students. Many times, they need a little bit of additional time. Last night, I met with over 100 bilingual parents, speaking many different languages. It was their PAC meeting. And, you know, these are the things that they want for their children. They want that additional support, that homework help, that academic support, those extracurricular activities. They want parents to be supported with instruction in the English language so that they can continue to support our students. So, these are things that make urban districts very unique, and it isn't that we don't do it well, and why you would cut those kinds of programs that are starting to show results. We're seeing this across the board, and I do feel it's an attack on urban education. It's a very different, you know, kind of student many times that comes through our doors. So, again, I think the time is right. As far as the Chapter 70, we're not sure when we'll actually get the final report, but I think it's incumbent upon us this summer to really take a look at where we're headed and to be prepared.
Any further discussion on the budget of Chapter 70?
We've gotten three-year grants and national grants to come in, and then at the end of three years, we're expected to pick up that cost, and it's just not there. We don't have it, and yet, it is a mandate, and that's some of that unpaid mandate, I assume that Tom was talking about too, that should be included with this.
So, we'll look forward to continuing that conversation, but I know the superintendent and I have discussed it several times, along with some of the school committee members, and, you know, I'm not optimistic at all. It's how we're going to do with the look at Chapter 70. When I go to mass municipal meetings, there are more communities there lobbying against us than for us. There are more suburbs who feel as though the cities are getting too much money and they don't get enough. So, it's not that we're just trying to get what we think is justified in an increase. I think we're fighting to hold on to what we have, because there's political pressure from the suburbs, and they have more representatives than we do, to tweak the formula back the other way that would take away from the city. So, I'm in complete agreement with the superintendent that, I think the time has come that we do need to file a lawsuit on behalf of one of our students, and it's a long, time-consuming process, but I think at least put some on notice, and, you know, perhaps that might affect some change, or at least we've got to get that time clock running, because if it's going to take several years to get a decision on a suit, then I think, you know, time is of the essence. So, I know we still need to have some additional conversations amongst the school committee and the city council. And I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but I think we're pretty much in agreement on this, that, you know, our job is to fight for our kids, and there's no question right now at the state level that they are not giving us a sufficient adjustment for English language learners. They're not giving us a sufficient adjustment for the percentage of low-income students we have, and they're also not recognizing the burden on a system like Brockton when they fill up three or four hotels full of homeless families, and then those children become homeless children in our school system, and, you know, I think we have about 10% of the homeless population of the state is in the city of Brockton right now. So, if the state is going to locate everyone here, then we ought to be getting some assistance to help pay for the cost of those students who are also very expensive to educate. And I think, you know, to be clear, you know, as a school system, you know, we welcome those children with open arms, just like we have many other groups of children, but we still need the money to pay for the education. And if the state's going to choose to have us, I think we have approximately 500 students in the system right now?
A little over.
A little over 500 students in our system that are categorized as homeless. You know, how many do you think they have in Easton? How many do you think they have in Wellesley? Not very many. And so, a very high percentage of those kids brings some real additional needs with them. They're behind, they're poor, they're not, someone are not speaking English, they may have trauma going on in their life. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on with those kids, and we take on that challenge, but it's an expensive challenge. And if the state's going to put us in that position, they ought to be helping us pay the bill. So, I don't mean to sound too negative, but, you know, we just look at these cycles the past couple of years, and, you know, even this year, when we were able to send over from local funding, state and local funding, about $5 million more than we did last year. But the problem is, when I sit down with the superintendent and the school committee, the cost of doing business went up 10. So, you know, it's a structural deficit that's built in each year, and it's happened for several years in a row now. So, it's, we are getting, we're getting some more money each year, and we're able to send over more money each year, but yet, the gap is going the wrong way, because each year, the increase that we get in school aid does not cover the increased costs each year between rising enrollments and all the other factors that I mentioned. And I was hopeful when they were considering pushing the date back for the, in terms of determining enrollment for the year. That would have been a huge benefit to Brockton, because we have students coming in all year long, and we do have some of the other schools sending us back students after October 1st. So, they send a student back to us after October 1st. We educate the student, they keep the money for the year. So, we really do have some issues to address here, and so while we're continuing to do the best we can with this year's budget, I do think it's time for us to also look at the longer view and realize that, you know, we didn't get equitable funding last time until the courts were involved, and I think it's becoming pretty apparent to me again that we're not going to get equitable funding again until we get the courts involved, and so, you know, let's get started.
Good.
Oh, back to me? All right. New business, approval of the accounts review subcommittee meeting report. Is that a recent one, or the minutes already in the, that's you? Give us a report, Andy.
Well, the accounts review subcommittee met, actually, just prior to this meeting tonight. After discussion, a motion was made by myself to accept the accounts reviewed from the period of February 18th through June 1st of 2015, and following that discussion, a motion was made to adjourn.
I guess, the motion, we're looking for a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report of the accounts review subcommittee.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. So, in the same spirit, we also need an approval of the bid review subcommittee meeting report. Ms. Clark?
The meeting of the bid review subcommittee meeting was held this evening at 6:35. There were two bids discussed. One was for the FY16 floor finishing supplies, and the other was for the linear and paper supplies. And a motion was made by Mr. Jordan to accept the bids as presented. Ms. Sullivan accepted, and then a motion was made to adjourn, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:44 PM.
We need any action on the items. We just need to vote to accept the report, I believe. Tom, does that sound right to you?
Yep.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept the report. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Approved unanimously. And then we have, not in your books, but on a separate sheet, did not make the press in time to get into the booklet, but we do have a request for participation in the National History Day contest from Pluff Academy. Do you want to bring them up to talk, or you just want to do it?
Principal Masrallah is there?
Principal Masrallah, would you like to come up and give us a brief overview of this very exciting news? It's somewhat a continuation of our awards recognition next door.
Mayor Carpenter, Superintendent Smith, good evening to everyone. We are very excited about our three students, Laura Cadoza, Megan Orton-Dahl, and Alexandra Yunus, who will be attending the National History Day competition in Washington, DC from June 14th through June 18th. Mr. Kowalik and Mrs. McNair, our librarian, have done a wonderful job preparing our students, but their determination and passion for learning, their creativity and ingenuity have truly paid off, and we're extremely proud of their accomplishments. Mr. Kowalik?
Thank you. I second that.
Ladies, if you could just speak to your projects briefly, I would greatly appreciate that.
I did my project on Thomas Edison, and as a lot of you probably know, Thomas Edison came to Brockton, and while doing this project, I learned a lot about the history in the city, and it makes me really proud to be from Brockton.
Me and Laura did our project on Mamie Till. A lot of people don't know who Mamie Till is, but if you know who Emmett Till is, that was, it's the mother of Emmett Till. Emmett Till got murdered in 1955 because he flirted with a white woman. So, when he got murdered, his mother, instead of, like, going around telling people, trying to make them feel bad for her, she went around and helped other children out, like, to get scholarships or help them into school and tell them the story of it so that they could get motivated.
We just think that it's, like, really important to tell her story, because she was a really inspiring woman, and not really people know, not many really, not many people really know about her story, but she should be known for what she did.
Sounds like a great project.
The competition itself will take place at the University of Maryland. Megan and Laura will already be down in Washington. They will be traveling with our group from June 12th through the 14th. Their parents will meet them on the 14th, and there'll be a safe transfer from the school to the parents. Alexandra will be traveling down to Washington with her family. Their parents will act as chaperones throughout. And once again, I would like to commend Megan and Laura, because their project will be on display at the American History Museum for the Smithsonian museums. We're very, very proud of all three young ladies. Along with that, I would like to ask for $1,497 to send them to Washington. Along with that, I would like to ask for $1,497 to send them to Washington amidst all the budget crisis, but I think they are most worthy, most deserving of this opportunity and of this experience.
That money would cover entry fee for all three contestants, lodging fee, and I believe a bus, there's also a bus fund, there's a delegation goes down on the bus together.
I'm sure we're able to find the money to support our students.
So I guess the motion, I believe, would be both to approve the out-of-state trip and to appropriate the funding of $1,497.
Sure.
All of those expenses?
Those are the expenses the district traditionally covers. You're right, it's not all the lodging, but it's for two, for the contestant and one chaperone, all additional lodging funds are picked up by the parents. So the funds, I believe it's 354 per student, rather, for student and chaperone, times three, three times the entry fee, but everything above that, the parents would have to pay for.
Yeah, that's just a fraction of what it's going to cost them to go there. And the parents are going to be with them throughout the duration of the...
That's correct.
...time. So is there anybody from the Pliff Academy going?
No.
So it's just the parents and the students?
It will be the parents with their students, yes.
Okay. This is a great opportunity, and we're very proud of all of you, and we know that you'll represent Brockton very well, and we'd love to know how you do.
I'm actually glad you said that. Their homework is to put Brockton Public Schools on the national map. We told them to do that. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
I just would like to congratulate the three students and Miss Nazarala and the teachers. These were the only three students in our middle school district that, in our district, that passed the state level and is now going to the national level. It's quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. Mr. Kualik and Mrs. McNair have worked extremely hard with all of our students, getting them ready. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I can speak if I may. Motion so moved.
Okay, motion's been made, properly seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the committee in the city, we wish you the best, we're all rooting for you, and we're exceptionally proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the parents stand up, or the parents go there, they'll be accompanying their students? Could you stand up?
Yeah, there we go, let's have the parents.
Congratulations.
Alexandra, save that project now, because we're working on getting a historic district for downtown Brockton, and Thomas Edison is a big part of that recognition for the historic district, and we're actively working on that right now. So we may need her help. All right. Does anyone else on the committee have any further new business? No? You haven't seen none? Entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, made and properly seconded, all in favor? This motion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.